...on November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five is called to order. Before I start, there's a lot of planning that goes into a town meeting. A contingency planning for a water main break is not among them. Thanks to our reliable DPW, the restrooms are available, although certain people sitting up front would really appreciate you using the outdoor portage on because we paid for it. Welcome and thank you for being here this evening. The first order of business is what I call the preliminaries. This is where I go through some of the basics and explain how we will operate tonight. Town meeting is not the public comment section of a select board or school committee meeting, nor is it a public forum or a public hearing. What town meeting is, is the legislature for the town of Ashland, and tonight we are sitting in legislative session. Together, we collectively approve the town budget, vote on capital purchases, approve bylaws, and more. My name is Adam Schuster. I am the town moderator. The moderator is elected by ballot for a three-year term at the annual election of town officers to preside at all town meetings during their term of office and is authorized by Mass. General Law, Chapter Thirty-nine, Section Fifteen, to regulate the proceedings, decide all questions of order, and make public announcement or declaration of all votes, subject to the bylaws that Ashland has enacted to regulate the proceedings of town meetings. The moderator, as part of their statutory authorized, statutorily authorized ability to regulate town meeting procedures, reserves the right to amend, alter, and/or waive any portion or all of these rules as the circumstances warrant, in the interest of fairness to all parties. All rulings of the moderator are final. Besides serving as the presiding officer of this legislation, legislature, I believe that my job is also to ensure that those here in attendance understand what is going on. And believe me, tonight, there's a lot going on. I'll do my best to explain anything out of the ordinary, again, of which there is a lot tonight. If at any time you have any question, have a question about something, please ask, as there are likely others with the same question. I'll be guided in running town meeting by the Fourth Edition of Town Meeting Time, which is published by the Massachusetts Moderator Association and generally recognized as the authoritative guide to running town meetings in Massachusetts. Joining me in the front of the auditorium are members of the School Committee, members of the Select Board, members of the Finance Committee, Town Council Lisa Mead, Town Manager Michael Herbert, Assistant Town Manager for Administration and Operations Catherine Byrd, Assistant Town Manager for Community Development and Community Affairs Beth Reynolds, Ashland Public Schools Superintendent Jim Adams, and with me on stage are Town Clerk Cindy Livingstone and Deputy Town Clerk Chris Solomon. And apologies for anyone I may have missed, just let me know later. This meeting is being broadcast live and recorded for later rebroadcast on WACA TV. Welcome to those watching us. When you checked in this evening, you received a yellow index card. It is important that you hang on to this card, as you will not be able to vote without it. Because votes will be counted based on the display of cards, non-voters may sit anywhere in the auditorium they prefer. I will generally be able to determine the results of each vote by a simple show of cards. Excuse me. In the event I am unable to do so, we have tellers that will perform an actual vote count. Tonight's tellers have already been sworn in. Please ensure that you have turned all cell phones and other electronic devices to mute. If you must take or make a phone call during these proceedings, please leave the auditorium to do so. The warrant that was posted and from which we are working tonight constitutes a notice or warning to all voters of what we will discuss tonight. Town meeting can only take action within the scope of an article on the posted warrant. Similarly, any discussion is also limited to the scope of the articles on the posted warrant. Town meeting acts on motions. If there isn't a motion before a town meeting, no action, including discussion, can take place. In order to allow for discussion, I will entertain a motion and a second for that motion after each article has been introduced and explained but before discussion commences. Once a motion has been made and seconded, it is subject to amendments from the floor. The procedures for amending an article are listed at the back of your handbook in the section titled Selected Town Meeting Procedures. If you have a question or comment during discussion of an article, make your way to one of the two microphones and wait to be recognized. After being recognized, please state your name and address and direct all your remarks to me. Please keep your comments brief and ensure that they are, they relate directly to the article being discussed. If you are unable to get to one of the microphones, please raise your hand, and I will have a microphone brought to you when it's your turn to speak. To ensure that we can hear from the greatest number of people, each speaker will be limited to one three-minute turn of the microphone during discussion of each article. Please remember that all comments or questions are to be addressed to me, and nobody may speak until recognized by me. Please do not address your remarks to any other individual. If you wish clarification from the previous speaker, please ask me, and I will call on that person. Importantly, all debate is to be conducted in a respectful and courteous manner. No comments of a personal nature are to be made. Rude behavior, especially shouting, bullying, and personal attacks, will not be tolerated. Anyone unwilling or unable to comply with this rule will be removed. I'd also ask that everyone refrain from applause and similar outbursts during discussions. Tonight, as I alluded to, is a little special. We have two separate special town meetings tonight. For ease of reference, I'm going to call them STM one and STM two. STM one is the warrant that includes seventeen articles, was posted for seven PM, and which I've already called to order. STM two is the single article warrant that was posted for seven oh one PM. I'll explain the machinations shortly. If you do not have copies of both warrants, they're in the back. Some announcements. Babysitting is being provided, and thank God we have bathrooms, this evening until nine PM by the Ashland Recreation Department. We should be done before nine PM. I don't think anyone guessed after nine PM, did they? We had people who get, we, there are people who guessed after nine PM, we're just throwing them out of the pool. But if we're not, children are welcome to join us in the auditorium at that point or any point this evening, they just can't vote. Thanks to Kelly Run and her team for making this service available. We have lots of holiday events in the next few weeks, starting with the annual Thanksgiving Farmer's Market this Saturday from nine to one at the normal location. The annual holiday stroll will take place Saturday, December sixth, from one to four. There will be pop-up booths from local vendors downtown selling their products, as well as the brick and mortar shops all over downtown. The day caps off with the annual tree lighting at four o'clock, that's December sixth. Illuminate Downtown Ashland happens from four thirty to seven thirty on Saturday, December thirteenth. The annual menorah lighting will take place on Sunday, December fourteenth, at six fifteen in Montenegro Square. Thanksgiving happens to be my favorite holiday of the year. For me, it's a time for family and food, but it's also an opportunity to reflect on what I have and to recognize that not everyone is as fortunate as I am. So please join me in supporting the Ashland Food Pantry as it strives to address food insecurity through access to quality nutritious food and basic everyday items. There's a QR code in the back table that explains how you can support the food pantry, and thank you in advance. The moderators' motions are listed in your handbook on page four. They're the same standard motions that we approve each town meeting, so I'll ask to address them as a group. Do I have a motion to approve moderators' motions one, two, three, four, as printed in the handbook? Is there a second? All in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. That passes unanimously. Onto our business for the night. As I mentioned earlier, we have two special town meetings this evening. Right now, I'm going to suspend STM one, so that I can call STM two to order. Once I've opened STM two, we'll vote on the moderators' motions for that meeting, after which I'll suspend STM two. I'll then reopen STM one. Once STM one is dissolved, I'll reopen STM two, and we'll proceed to address the article on that warrant. Before I move on, does anyone have any questions about that? I, I expect some. All right. Thank you for not having questions on that. So, a quorum of twenty-five voters being present, the special town meeting posted for seven oh one PM on November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five is called to order. The moderators' motions are listed in your handbook on page four. They're the same standard motions we approve each town meeting, in which we've already approved for STM one, so I'll ask to address them as a group. Do I have a motion to approve moderators' motions one, two, three, four, as printed in the handbook? Is there a second? All in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. Thank you. With that completed, I'm now going to suspend STM two until the dissolution of STM one, at which point I'll reopen STM two. With that done, I'm now reopening STM one. Please note that Articles four, six, eleven, and fourteen are being withdrawn this evening. Article six is being withdrawn due to legal delays on the part of the seller. Article eleven is being withdrawn because it has not met the procedural requirements to come before a town meeting, and Article fourteen is being withdrawn because of a fatal drafting error that gave birth to our second special town meeting this evening. In addition, the petitioners of Article seventeen have asked to withdraw the article to allow for further discussion with the Select Board. Because Article seventeen is a petition, I can't simply withdraw it. Therefore, I'll entertain a motion to dismiss Article seventeen. Do I have such a motion? Is there a second? All those in favor of dismissing Article seventeen, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. That passes unanimously. Article one, free cash transfer, sponsored by the Town Manager and Finance Director. To see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash an amount of funds to be placed in the stabilization fund, OPEB trust fund, Special Education Special Purpose Stabilization Account, capital account, and/or general fund, or pass any vote or action relative thereto. The Finance Committee recommends that town transfer three million twenty-two thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollars from free cash to the following accounts. One million eight hundred thirteen four hundred and seventy-seven dollars to the general stabilization fund. Three hundred and two thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars to the OPEB trust fund. Two hundred and ten thousand to the sped stabilization fund, and six hundred ninety-six thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars to the capital account. Mr. Herbert.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, everybody. It's nice to see some new faces here and some familiar faces here. As the moderator has mentioned, this is the article that we do each year for our transfer of free cash. Free cash is essentially the balance at the end of the fiscal year, after we take in all of our revenue and look at all of our expenditures. This year, the free cash number is three million twenty-two thousand four hundred and sixty-two, a little bit higher than previous years. The reason being is that this includes a fairly large allocation of ARPA funds that needed to be appropriated before we lost them. They are being distributed to the different funds via our free cash policy, where sixty percent goes to the general stabilization fund, ten or fifteen percent goes to OPEB trust and stabilization fund, and the rest, or excuse me, the sped stabilization fund, and the rest goes to capital.
Thank you, Mr. Herbert. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion to the town vote to transfer from free cash one million eight hundred thirteen thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars to the general stabilization fund. Three hundred and two thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars to the OPEB trust fund. Two hundred and ten thousand to the sped stabilization fund, and six hundred ninety-six thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars to the capital account. Do I have such a motion? Is there a second? Seeing discussion, no discussion, we'll move right to a vote. This will require a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion on Article one, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. That passes unanimously. Article two, budget amendment, sponsored by the Town Manager and Finance Director. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds in the Treasury a sum of money to be added to or to make adjustments to Article four of the May two thousand and twenty-five Annual Town Meeting Fiscal Year two thousand and twenty-six budget, or pass any vote or take any action relative thereto. The Finance Committee recommends the town raise and appropriate or transfer, as noted in the table in your handbooks, to make adjustments to or add to the FY twenty-six budget. Mr. Herbert.
Thank you again, Mr. Moderator. It's stated this is a budget amendment for the FY twenty-six budget that was passed in May of two thousand and twenty-five. After we passed that budget, we continue to get revenue, final revenue numbers, including new growth numbers, which are associated with our property taxes, as well as state aid. This year, we realized a four hundred and forty-nine thousand dollar positive difference compared to what we had estimated at town meeting, and that is broken up by a new growth increase of two hundred and fifty-four thousand and state aid increases of a hundred and ninety-four thousand. Instead of appropriating all of that money, we made a decision to essentially take the new growth figure and reduce the deficit that we were operating under in the FY twenty-six budget, and then with the state aid increases, we distributed that according to another one of our financial policies. And so that money is being distributed as follows. There's a forty thousand dollar reduction in the KEATC budget, because that appropriation is actually going down. The School Department budget will see an increase of a hundred and thirty-six thousand one hundred and twenty-one. The Conservation Commission will see a budget increase of twenty thousand. Inspection Services will see a budget increase of twenty thousand, and the Treasurer Collector budget will see an increase of eighteen thousand three hundred.
Thank you, Mr. Herbert. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the town raise and appropriate or transfer the following funds in order to make adjustments to or add to the FY twenty-six annual budget. School Department increase of one hundred and thirty-six thousand one hundred and twenty-one dollars. Conservation Commission increase of twenty thousand dollars. Inspection Services increase of twenty thousand dollars. Treasurer Collector increase of eighteen thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars. KEATC decrease of forty thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars. Do I have such a motion? Is there a second? Seeing no discussion, we'll move right to an immediate vote. This will require a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion on Article two, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. That passes unanimously. Article three, property tax exemptions, sponsored by the Board of Assessors, Select Board, and Town Manager. See if the town will vote to adjust the exemption amount and eligibility factors for the property tax exemption for senior citizens under Mass. General Law, Chapter Fifty-nine, Section Five, Clause Forty-one C and a half, to be effective for exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and twenty-five, or pass any vote or take any action relative thereto. The Finance Committee recommends the town adjust the exemption amount and eligibility factors for the property tax exemption for senior citizens under Mass. General Law, Chapter Fifty-nine, Section Five, Clause Forty-one C and a half, to twelve percent, to be effective for exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Mignani.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good evening, everyone. This is an annual warrant article that we're happy to be able to afford residents, especially our senior citizens. There are certain situations and certain requirements that are, that are needed to be followed for the senior tax exemptions, and you can go to the assessors' website on the town website to get a list of all those exceptions and exemptions. This usually runs for a family of two. Sorry about that. For sixty-nine thousand dollars annual income for the, for two individuals. And then you have to be a resident here in town, own property in town, and for at least five years, and live here in, in, in Massachusetts or in Ashland for a total of ten years as well. So the percentage, like Mr. Moderator had mentioned, is twelve percent, and basically that comes to about eleven hundred dollars, a little, little more than eleven hundred dollars a year as an exemption on your property tax. So I would strongly recommend that we support this and pass it for those who could use that extra assistance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mignani. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the town vote to adjust the exemption amount and eligibility factors for the property tax exemption for senior citizens under Mass. General Law, Chapter Fifty-nine, Section Five, Clause Forty-one C and a half, to twelve percent, to be effective for exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and twenty-five. Do I have such a motion? Is there a second? Seeing none, we'll move right to a vote, which will require a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion on Article three, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. That passes unanimously. Article five, appropriate CPA funds for town forest survey work and property appraisal, sponsored by the Community Preservation Committee. See if the town will vote to appropriate up to forty thousand dollars to enable survey work and property appraisals for potential land acquisition of parcels bordering the town forest, and to meet this appropriation, the sum of up to forty thousand dollars be transferred from the open space account from the Community Preservation Fund balance, and with unexpended funds as of December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-eight, be in return to their funding source, or pass any vote or take any action relative thereon. The Finance Committee recommends the town so vote.
Good evening, Chair of the, is there a method? If you get too close, it rings. Okay. Okay, all right. Great work by our Town Forest Committee, led by Rob Saint Germain. This is to help with future acquisition projects, as well as determining property boundaries of things that are noted in other articles. So, Rob, is there anything you want to add?
Thank you, Mr. Ladd. Don't go too far, Mr. Ladd, you're, you're up next. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the town appropriate up to forty thousand dollars to enable survey work and property appraisals for potential land acquisition of parcels bordering the town forest, and to meet this appropriation, the sum of up to forty thousand dollars be transferred to the, from the open space account from the Community Preservation Fund balance, and with unexpended funds as of December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-eight, be in return to their funding source. Do I have such a motion? Is there a second? Discussion. And to start us off tonight, Dr. Curtis.
Curtis Hoffman, fifty-eight Hilldale Road. In the spring, I attended a meeting of the Mass., Metropolitan Area Planning Commission in which they indicated an interest in adding parcels to our town forest. So I just wanted to point out that this is something which is in line with their plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Seeing nothing further, we'll move right to a vote. This will require a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion on Article five, Article five, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. That passes unanimously. Article seven, appropriate CPA funds for field data collection and invasive vegetation management at Beaver Dam Brook Conservation Area, sponsored by the Community Preservation Committee. See if the town will vote to appropriate up to fifty thousand dollars to complete field data collection and invasive vegetation management on the property along Pond Street, referred to as Beaver Dam Brook Conservation Area, and to meet this appropriation, the sum of up to fifty thousand dollars be transferred from the open space account from the Community Preservation Fund balance, and with unexpended funds as of December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-eight, be in return to their funding source, or pass any vote or take any action thereon. The Finance Committee recommends the town so vote. Mr. Ladd.
Just for clarification, probably the thing that's most unique to people here is probably the name. So Beaver Dam Brook Conservation Area is a land of parcels connected with Article fifteen later in this consent, that is, property that is along one twenty-six, that is significant wetland areas. It has Beaver Dam Brook running through it, and as a result, creating this conservation area will allow for the Conservation Department to start removing invasive vegetation, as well as starting to do the collection on how we can improve those trails. But I think the name of the property is something that it will be new to people, because it was previously unknown and unnamed, and so the Beaver Dam Brook Conservation Area will help identify what is Framingham, Sherburne, Ashland, all in a triangle area along one twenty-six, and is really going to be a great addition to town.
Thank you, Mr. Ladd. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the town appropriate up to fifty thousand dollars to complete field data collection and invasive vegetation management on the property along Pond Street, referred to as Beaver Dam Brook Conservation Area, and to meet this appropriation, the sum of up to fifty thousand dollars be transferred from the open space account from the Community Preservation Fund balance, and with unexpended funds as of December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-eight, be in return to their funding source. Do I have such a motion? Is there a second? Seeing none, we'll move right to a vote. This will require a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion on Article seven, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. That passes unanimously. Article eight, appropriate CPA funds for high school softball field playing surface dirt replacement, sponsored by the CPC. See if the town will vote to appropriate up to twenty-five thousand dollars for replacement of high school softball field playing surface dirt, dirt, and to meet this appropriation, the sum of up to twenty-five thousand dollars be transferred from the open space account from the Community Preservation Fund balance, and with unexpended funds as of December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-eight, be in return to their funding source, or pass any vote or take any action thereon. The Finance Committee recommends the town so vote. Mr. Ladd.
More than you wanted to know about dirt, but at its current thought process, replacing the dirt will reduce maintenance for the town. The current infrastructure of the dirt relies on a lot of DPW work, and by replacing it, will save the DPW a lot of work, so straightforward.
Thank you, Mr. Ladd. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the town appropriate up to twenty-five thousand dollars for replacement of high school softball field playing surface dirt, and to meet this appropriation, the sum of up to twenty-five thousand dollars be transferred from the open space account from the Community Preservation Fund balance, and with unexpended funds as of December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-eight, be in return to their funding source. Do I have such a motion? Is there a second? Seeing none, we'll move straight to a vote. This will require a simple majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. That passes unanimously. Article nine, accept Mass. General Law, Chapter Two Seventy-two, Section Seventy-three A, sponsored by the Historical Commission. See if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter Two Seventy-two, Section Seventy-three A, in order to allow the town to not prohibit the removal in accordance with rules and regulations promulgated by the State Secretary of a gravestone or other structure of, or thing which is placed or designed as a memorial for the dead for the purpose of repair or reproduction thereof by community-sponsored, educationally-oriented, and professionally-directed repair teams, or take any action relative thereto. The Finance Committee defers this recommendation to town meeting. Ms. Keegan.
Thank you. Yes, so this will allow for the removal of gravestones and other structures in order to repair or restore by community-sponsored, educationally-oriented, and professionally-directed repair teams. It will allow the incredible work that the Ashland Historical Commission has been doing, specifically in the Village Burial Ground, to continue. So this is very critical for us to accept sort of that initiative to go on.
Thank you, Ms. Keegan. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the town accept the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter Two Seventy-two, Section Seventy-three A. Do I have such a motion? Is there a second? Discussion. Seeing none, we'll move right to a vote. This will require a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion on Article nine, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. That passes unanimously. Article ten, accept the provisions of Chapter One Thirty-eight, Section Twelve D regarding the municipality's ability to allow transfer of on-premises wine and malt liquor licenses to all alcoholic beverage licenses, sponsored by the Town Manager's Select Board. See if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Chapter One Thirty-eight, Section Twelve D, which allows the town to approve an on-premises wine and malt beverage license holder to trade in their existing license for a non-transferable, on-premises, all-alcohol beverage license, or take any action relative thereto. The Finance Committee recommends the town accept the provisions of Chapter One Thirty-eight, Section Twelve D. Ms. Kinsman.
Good evening, everybody. Hello? There we go. All right, there we go. Hi, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As he stated, this would allow the Select Board, as the local licensing authority, to permit an on-premises wine and beer license to trade it in for an all-alcohol license. This would be for establishments like restaurants. This isn't for retail sales, and it could potentially give restaurants a little bit more flexibility if there were no more all-alcohol licenses available. Currently, it would only be applicable to three establishments here in Ashland. It would be Dolce De Leche, Ashland Pizza Palace, and Spice Kitchen. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kinsman. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the town accept the provisions of General Law, Chapter One Thirty-eight, Section Twelve D. Do I have such a motion? Is there a second? Not a talkative group tonight. Seeing no discussion, we'll move on to a vote. It requires a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion on Article eleven, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. That passes unanimously. Article twelve, update dog kennel bylaw, sponsored by the Town Clerk. To see if the town will vote to amend Chapter Eighty-seven, Animal Control, Section Eighty-seven dash eight of the Town of Ashland General Bylaws, as is printed in your handbook. The Finance Committee recommends the town so vote. Ms. Greaves.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This article is to clean up some bylaw language, as well as to reflect changes to Ollie's Law, which is a state law based on the death of a dog in a kennel. So, not a lot of changes, but you'll notice in the, in the package where the underlines and bolds are, those are the changes that were In the package where the underlines and bolds are, those are the changes that we're looking for you to review and pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Greaves. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the town amend Chapter Eighty-seven, Animal Control, Sections Eighty-seven dash eight, Eighty-seven dash nine, Eighty-seven dash twelve, and Eighty-seven dash twenty-one of the Town of Ashland general bylaws, as set forth in Article Twelve of this warrant. Do I have such a motion?
Still moved.
Is there a second? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. This will require a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion on Article Twelve, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. That passes unanimously. Article Thirteen, Municipal Tax Payment Agreement Bylaw, sponsored by the Town Manager and Finance Director. To see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Ashland general bylaws by adding a new section, new chapter, Twenty-six dash seven, Municipal Tax Payment Agreements, in accordance with the General Law's Chapter Sixty, Section Sixty-two A, as is printed in your handbook. The Finance Committee recommends the town so vote.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm actually going to turn it over to our Finance Director.
My mistake.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you, Michael. So, there were significant changes, tax title reform changes, under Section One Forty of the Massachusetts Acts of two thousand and twenty-four, and accepting this article would reduce the initial payment for a payment plan, which would be... Go down from twenty-five percent to ten percent of the total needed to redeem the tax-taking. This would, you know, help folks, you know, enter into a payment agreement, and also this would stop any kind of foreclosure petition or anything by the town. So, that's about it. It's a five-year payment plan as well, so it's sixty payments, so you would put down ten percent of the total due, and then we would calculate, you know, sixty payments out, and you'd still have to keep up with your current taxes. But I think this is a move in the right direction, to help folks who've fallen a little behind in their payments.
Thank you very much. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the town amend the Town of Ashland general bylaws by adding a new chapter, Twenty-six dash seven, Municipal Tax Payment Agreements, in accordance with General Law's Chapter Sixty, Section Sixty-two A, as set forth in Article Thirteen of this warrant. Do I have such a motion? Is there a second? Seeing none, we'll move right to a vote on Article Thirteen. All those in favor of the motion on Article Thirteen, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. That passes unanimously as well. Article Fifteen, Acceptance of Conservation Restriction, sponsored by the Conservation Commission. See if the town will authorize the Conservation Commission to enter into a conservation restriction with trustees of the reservation for the land to be gifted to the Conservation Commission from Peter Zanni, for the land shown on Town of Ashland Assessor's map property addresses and IDs as indicated in your handbook, to be part of the area known as the Beaver Dam Brook Conservation Area, or take any action related thereto. The Finance Committee recommends the town so vote.
Testing. So, this article would be, as referenced earlier, to create the Beaver Dam Brook Conservation Area off of Route One-twenty-six as part of a grant that is involved in the Framingham and Sherburne parts of these parcels. The donation to Ashland requires us to have a conservation restriction put onto it as well, and so this vote would allow the Conservation Commission to enter into that agreement so that we can complete the creation of the area.
Thank you, Ms. Solomon. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the town authorize the Conservation Commission to enter into a conservation restriction with trustees of the reservation for the land to be gifted to the Conservation Commission from Peter Zanni, for the land shown on Town of Ashland Assessor's map property addresses and IDs as follows. Zero Pond Street rear, zero-one-four dash zero-two-two dash dot dot zero dash zero-zero-five-four dash zero-zero-zero-zero dot zero. Zero Pond Street rear, zero-one-four slash zero-two-two dot zero dash zero-zero-five-five dash zero-zero-zero-zero dot zero. Zero bracket road rear, zero-one-four slash zero-one-six dot zero dash zero-one-five-three dash zero-zero-zero-zero dot zero, including approximately twenty-seven acres, and is shown on the plan by GCG dated ten-nine twenty-twenty-five, and on file with the Town Clerk, and to be part of the area known as the Beaver Dam Brook Conservation Area. Do I have such a motion? Is there a second?
Hi, Marty Ring, Forty-two Bay Colony. Has this conservation restriction been written already?
Has the conservation restriction been written already?
The conservation restriction has not been written yet. It is in draft. This article would just allow us to further go into that draft and actually make the final agreement on it. There would be further conversations and public hearings related thereto.
Thank you.
Anything further? Seeing no further discussion, we will move to a vote. This will require a two-thirds majority. All those in favor of the article... Motion on Article Fifteen, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. That passes unanimously. Article Sixteen, endorsement of comprehensive plan envisioned Ashland, sponsored by the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee. See if the town will authorize the Conservation Commission to enter into... Accept the resolution printed in your handbooks to endorse the Town of Ashland's two thousand and twenty-five comprehensive plan envisioned Ashland, or act in any manner relating thereto. The Finance Committee's recommendation? Is there a recommendation from the Finance Committee?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, there is. You guys hearing?
Testing. Whoa. Holy cow. Yes, the Finance Committee does have a recommendation. The Finance Committee recommends the town vote in favor of the article's adoption. We believe that the plan provides a thoughtful, long-term vision for Ashland's growth, development, and quality of life. However, we do want to be clear on why not one item, that our support is... And adoption for this article is not a commitment of funding. Many of the initiatives outlined in the comprehensive plan would require substantial future appropriations, phasing, studying, acquisition, building, and then ultimately, maintenance. The town does currently not have the fiscal, financial capacity to implement the full scope of this plan without additional resources or an improvement in fiscal conditions. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Greaves.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you to the Select Board and Planning Board for the opportunity to present Ashland's next comprehensive plan, a plan that will take us to two thousand and thirty-five and beyond. This plan was approved to bring to town meeting by a joint vote of the Planning Board and Select Board at a meeting on ten-twenty-eight-twenty-five. Next page, please. I want to start by thanking the twenty-nine-member committee that spent many hours in meetings, conversation, and reaching out to the public for their input. I would ask that if any of the members on this slide are here, to just raise your hand so that the community can recognize the work that you did. Thank you all. Now on to the plan that we are asking for your approval of this evening. Here is our vision that was generated from many meetings and many discussions and input by many of you. By two thousand and thirty-five, Ashland is a diverse, inclusive community that honors and preserves its small-town charm, its rich history, and open space. The town features vibrant and sustainable neighborhoods with exceptional schools and aesthetically pleasing public and private spaces for living, learning, working, gaining, shopping... And I believe that's not the correct word, and playing. Ashland's reimagining of land use prioritizes the creation of safe, walkable, bikeable, and multimodal transportation options to address the needs of its growing population, enhance community connectivity, and provides well-maintained, accessible recreational amenities. Ashland is adaptive to the community's changing needs with an emphasis on cultural assets, diverse housing options, town infrastructure, open space, and climate change solutions. The town promotes business opportunities to foster prosperity and economic stability. Ashland also focuses on affordability and accessibility for people of all ages, ensuring that everyone has the ability to enjoy the benefits of our town. Ashland's community spirit is defined by flourishing downtown areas, welcoming gathering spaces, and celebrations of its diverse population and robust volunteerism. There are five core themes, and each core theme has many goals and strategies. The first is building and enhancing community. It has three goals associated with it with twelve strategies, and it's focused on strengthening our community. Our second core theme... I'm going fast because I only have five minutes. Promoting long-term sustainability. There are four goals associated. This is twenty-eight strategies. And this focus on how we can strategize for... Tough when you can't read your own notes. Ways to improve and enhance Ashland's goals of sustainability. And there's a lot of nice detailed strategies related to this. Our third core theme is guiding development that honors open space and conservation. It has four goals associated with thirteen strategies. This looks at what is already being built, what has been built, and how we can determine how we're going to enhance our community with possible future growth. Again, lots of details. Next is core theme four, enhancing town services and economic development with three goals and twenty strategies. Its focus is on enhancing our town's ability to support its residents and businesses. Core theme five is creating a connected and accessible community. With three goals and nine strategies, it focuses on connecting within Ashland and within our region, and how can we do that in a productive way for Ashland, as well as the areas around us. The next steps are implementation, where we stay the course and embrace our journey. When this is passed, the Planning Board and Select Board will put together an implementation committee that will work closely with town staff, all other volunteer committees, to move this strategy forward. And yes, the Finance Committee has stated that financially, this might not... We might not have the funds right now, but as a community, if we vote this plan, we get to decide how we spend and if we spend for these projects that we think we've received a lot of information for, that people think is important. Last picture? This was our start hundreds of years ago. We get to determine if the plan before you can be our future. I would ask that you support this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Greaves. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the town accept the resolution as set forth in Article Sixteen of the warrant. Do I have such a motion? Is there a second? And I was going to ask for the Planning Board's recommendations, so thank you for standing up, Tricia.
Tricia Kendall, Sixth Ruben Ecker Road. I currently chair the Planning Board. As per Mass General Law, the comprehensive plan does fall under the purview of the Planning Board. The Planning Board, however, worked in conjunction with the Select Board on the comprehensive plan, and the team that was described, of which I was not a part, but which worked very hard over these past two years. And in a recent joint meeting of the Select Board and the Planning Board, the Planning Board members did vote unanimously to support this comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kendall.
Hi, Paul Alpern, Eleventh Femia Road. Love the plan. Really enjoyed reading about it several months ago, and continuing to learn more about how it's being developed. I just have a question. I hope this is appropriate. Do we have an idea how we're going to pay for some of these things if we vote to move forward?
That is not part of this conversation. No. Dr. Hoffman.
Curtis Hoffman, Fifty-eight Hilldale Road. Just as a point of clarification, at least as I understand it, then response to the Finance Committee's statement, should we approve this this evening, at any point where a proposed appropriation is planned, you will have to come back to town meeting to get an approval of that. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. Thank you.
Hi, Leah Suarez, Twenty-Five Valley Road. I was also a member of the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee. I think what's important to keep in mind with this plan is that it's a guide. It's to help our town leaders decide what should be prioritized. It's not a honey-do checklist that we're going to be checking off the items over the next ten years. I also think it's very important to recognize that there is a lot of growing frustration in this town about the fact that we feel powerless. A lot of that is due to state mandates, and we took that very seriously when we're developing this plan. I think we wanted to prioritize resident input in our town government as much as possible, and that's been woven into the different goals, the different strategies throughout the plan.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, we'll move to a vote. But before we move to a vote, just a reminder, after we dissolve this STM in a moment, there's still action to be taken on the warrant for STM two, so don't go far. The so-called, under the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and to authorize the Select Board to negotiate and execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate same. Do I have such a motion? Is there a second? Discussion. Ms. Bennett, if you'd like.
Claudia Bennett, Nine Sandstone Way. I guess my name didn't make it into your notes, so I really just wanted to introduce Mr. St. Germain, and really thank him for the vast amount of work that he does to really grow our town forest, including things like weeding and taking care of it, but he's just... Does tremendous work, so I just wanted to make sure that we thanked him publicly. Thank you.
Dr. Hoffman.
Curtis Hoffman, Fifty-eight Hilldale Road. Speaking now as an archaeologist, I wonder how many of our town meeting members realize what a resource our town forest is for Native American sacred site stone constructions, of which there are over sixty that have been identified. Last summer, Mr. St. Germain led a group of us on a tour of the newly acquired area in which I identified three additional such structures. I have every reason to believe that the new parcel will also have the potential for these structures, which are in some ways unique to this portion of Massachusetts, so I would urge approval of the article. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, we'll move right to a vote. This will require a two-thirds majority. All those in favor of the motion on Article One, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. That passes unanimously. There be no further business on STM two. I'll entertain a motion to dissolve. Is there a second? All in favor? And opposed. Dissolved. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.